Alright, welcome to the in Mendham dot com review of town council meeting thing. Yes, this is the May 3rd meeting and eventually I'll come up with some sort of regular routine for this stuff. Um, little difficult getting these files, the audio files from the borough. Uh, it took over a month and they're in a format you can't use on normal computers. Um, any special software and all this, it's just an audio file, but it's in a for the record rackety, you know, just the way the government does everything, do it the hard way, not the simple way. Um, and uh, anyway, just uh, so anyway, I do have some of the meetings, I'll make this one available as an MP3 file. I'll leave a link below, if there is a below. Um, do that file if you want it of the meeting and uh, and I'll proceed with my commentary. Um, which is that the government is, you know, not very functional and way too expensive. And uh, there's always something to point a finger at and I'll do some of that finger pointing because no one else is doing it. So, somebody's gotta do it. Um, anyway, so I'll start off with the beginning of the meetings thing I've always. Nice start. I will win no professionalism award. Alright, so I'm out of luck this year. Uh, so um, it always starts off with this silent moment thing, which is just another, a way of veiling this idea that we all have to be respectful of religious fantasies and fairy tales. And uh, no matter what fairy tale somebody has, we have to respect it unless their fairy tale has something to do with sexual orientation or some other thing, then we can align it and mock it. Um, you know, just such a pile of crap. It's just so political, you know, it's just this thing, okay, we can't, we can't force you to use the word Jehovah or something, you know, Jesus, but we can force you, you know, to recognize that we all support this God notion. Um, just, you know, and then they do the pledge of allegiance with the stupid under God crap in it. Now, this is in the context of government where it's rampant liars and cheaters and thieves, women molesters, all kinds of shit going on. These politicians are as corrupt and dirty as they could possibly be in the history of history. And uh, they all do this pledge. So what does this pledge mean? When you all do it and you're all liars and you're all thieves and you're all crooks? What does it mean to do these silly pledges under your fake gods? Um, when you don't even have the courage to pass laws saying maybe if a cop or a public official violates somebody's constitutional rights and it's found so in a court, that they should get 10 times the penalty of a regular citizen. Um, you know, public servants should be servants, not tyrants. They just don't get it. So that's something to align right from the beginning. Yes, so I'll do that. That might be a subject that comes up a few times. I do plan on eventually, when I'm able to get these files in a timely manner, uh, and I can actually ask relevant questions and get relevant answers in some relevant amount of time. Um, then yes, maybe I'll force them in some way or other to um, account for some of these um, problems, you have these issues. Alright, so anyway, there's a consent agenda. So after went through their little tradition, their little ritual, um, then they do this other ritual, which is a consent agenda where they apparently all agree ahead of time on crap that they don't want to discuss. And they throw it into some other bucket called consent and they just pass it. Um, so I don't know if there's ever much in there. It is just usually banner requests and other kinds of silly nonsense. But um, yeah, it probably should be scrutinized. Alright, so in this meeting, there's apparently been some problem at the sewage plant. Kind of an expensive problem as far as I know, I don't, haven't got the, it's always hard to figure out exactly what something costs because the resolutions to deal with finding the money and the comments about what it costs are always not too related. But anyway, um, so apparently some big pipe, 18 inch pipe. Um, got clogged with some sort of lime residue shit over time and shit, yeah. And um, you know, it's, they got high voltage power lines going on top of it for some dopey reason and some other issues and cement and all kinds of, well, anyway, big production to somehow take that pipe out and replace it. Um, and then there was some conversation about how this is some problem or something, something about copper pipes or something. Then $5 million, but they chose not to do that because they can think outside the box. You know, good. You know, my only, uh, you know, I had to deal with the sewage plant people uh, 10 years ago or more. Uh, while I'm 12 feet down in the ground, um, and you know, when you're in the, I'm down in the ground, 12 feet, sitting in the mud, you know, in the sewage, fixing something, they can't think outside of any box. You know, all of a sudden, all their outside the box stuff goes right out the window. You know, and they start banging you over the head with silly, you know, rules from 1925. Um, so they're, they're, you know, this outside the box thing only seems to work, you know, when it's to their advantage. They're all outside the box and when it's to their advantage, they're all inside the box. Um, I, I, if I didn't mention it, I really have a horrible cynicism towards these, these hacks. You know, on the local level, on the medium level, on any level, these, these government people need to be, that they need to have ankle bracelets or wrist or whatever it is put on, that they need to be followed and, and watched in everything they do. Because they're all got sticky fucking fingers and they're malicious. They don't like somebody, they go get them. Uh, you know, they use the law um, trivially and it's, it's quite bothersome. Law doesn't apply to them, especially the cops. Just ain't right. Just ain't right, sorry. It just is not right. It's not the way it's supposed to be. It's supposed to be higher accountability with higher responsibility and higher salaries, by the way. Not that the council's paid much, but all of these people they hire are way overpaid. And if you're gonna be way overpaid, then yeah, there probably should be a camera watching everything, single thing you do. Anyway, so maybe I'm in a bad mood. Um, uh, so let's see, but this is something too small. Live too small, live too small. I don't know what that means, but anyway, yeah, so it's lime. It just seems like maybe they should have a system for cleaning things now and then, you know, pipe flushing or something. It's like at the mud hole. They never open the drain and, you know, let some water go through to keep it from clogging. You know, the whatever it is, the sluice valve with the something or other they call those things. Never do it. They used to do it when I was a kid, never do it now. No wonder why it doesn't work. Anyway. Um, low volume, um, blah, 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 much muck copper. Okay, so that's enough of all that stuff. Um, so there was some kind of, uh, there's a capital improvement thing for $403,000. Uh, I don't know exactly what that's for. It might just be for roads and this and that and the other thing, but I'm not sure. Uh, something about trees. Sorry, I wrote this when I listened to it and I always take very bad, um, oh, taxes. Okay, so there was, there's always some issue about tax protest and this and that and the other thing. So yes, so they acknowledge they have some issues to clean up. Um, construction code official, okay, and then, then some fire official. So these are part-time people and they pay them over $40 an hour. And they do things like the, the, the fire code official just presses buttons on smoke detectors and looks at the label on a fire extinguisher and they're paying somebody $40 an hour to do that. I mean, you know, drive time, talk time, blah, 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 you know, just, I mean, for something, probably for something as simple as just pressing the smoke detector button. And you know, they, they, I said it before, but they could find some other way to do this to make sure people are complying. Um, a compliance officer, just have a general compliance officer. Uh, so I just, I don't even, I don't even know what the construction code official does, you know, I don't know what little button he just presses. Um, but yeah, it's a lot of money for um, not much work. And worthy of, of pointing out, uh, let's see, they had an executive session, that seems like that should be later. Anyway, something about the day top, uh, drug treatment thing, I guess it is or something, whatever. So they got some legal issue with them, attorney-client privilege. It's, yeah, another term just used to, you know, avoid, you know, scrutiny. Um, so the mayor does have a message on the website, I should just go to that. Uh, so, you know, uh, uh, oh, yeah, it should be there. Um, so, uh, and he's, he's talking about how we're saving all this money on our electric bills. Um, if we're part of some kind of racket of some kind. Um, so a thousand out of, out of 1,500 people, a thousand people somehow are in the program. I don't know whether I'm in or out of it, um, but it always makes these claims about how much is being saved. And you know, you have to always be wondering, okay, who gave you that number of $42,000? So residents saved in, from September to February, uh, $42,000. Now compared to what? Compared to the worst rates they could have chosen or compared to the best rates? Or compared to the generic default rate? Who knows? So anyway, I'm not saying it's a bad program, I'm just saying, I don't, yeah, I don't trust these people. Uh, so who knows? Um, you know, and they're doing all this, this economic development stuff talk. Um, like we, like people living in a town should care about the local town economy. Um, that's not really why you live in a place like Mendham, is it? I don't think it is. Uh, you know, it's really not your concern. Um, you know, the help a local business is owned by somebody who lives in some other town, right? I mean, why, you know, what's the sense in any of this? Uh, the last thing you wanna do is attract people from other towns into your town to just clog up the streets with their traffic. So uh, too successful a business, you don't even wanna, you know, you don't want any of that. Uh, what would be nice is if they had some kind of service, you know, uh, as I pointed out before, you know, it's, there's certain efficiencies you can gain. And you know, the idea of people going from their home to King's or to one of the little stores there to buy one item and then drive home, it's very inefficient. And if they had some system where you hire one guy and you're paying maybe 40 grand a year and he does all those little jobs for people. Um, and uh, it's saves you traffic and saves you, it saves gas. I mean, it's just a win-win, just deliver it like a mailman or whatever, you know, you just hit your stops, dump your stuff off. And um, you know, makes your town more livable if you can avoid having people making nuisance trips. You know, especially when you have a traffic problem like Mendham has, big time. Um, you know, especially during certain hours and all that kind of stuff. Alright, um, so IT bid, so this is a, an interesting subject just because uh, from my personal encounter with the borough so far with their, with the new clerk, I don't wanna, I don't wanna be too, you know, but it is, you know, it is horrible. You know, it's so dysfunctional. I mean, just can't do simple things, come on, simple IT things. Things that any modern secretary should be well-versed in. Uh, you know, file formats and attaching things to emails and all that stuff should be, they should be real pros at that kind of stuff. Uh, if they're gonna get $75,000 a year, you know, come on. Um, but you know, but this, this IT stuff should probably be in-house kind of stuff. It should be the stuff, you should have a tech person that handles all this stuff and call them a glorified secretary. Have them do a few other odd jobs maybe to justify their existence. Um, but this idea, they hire us out to private companies, they, they pay a company rent to do the website and it's, it's pretty much never, you know, it's not updated very quickly or done very well because, you know, they're just ripping the town off. Um, so, but it does seem, uh, you know, that at least some of the council members seem to understand that, okay, they don't even have any of this stuff by department, they have different IT people doing different departments. They don't even have one budget to even figure out how much money they're spending on this stuff. Um, and I would argue they're not getting anything for their money. Um, because you know, you can't, you can't see any evidence of any high efficiency in their IT-ness. Um, alright, so there's some talk about a part-time secretary for the police department. Now, this is always, I mean, in the old days, this would come up and some of these employees are like relatives and, you know, and stuff. Doesn't look too good. Um, so part-time secretary for, and apparently all they were doing was work for the extra duty cop services, like where the cops charge us to, you know, watch the parade and crap like that. Um, you know, $100 an hour, whatever, you know, outrageous amount of money. Um, yes, and so we're paying for a secretary for cops to have, you know, um, birthday presents. Anyway, extra. Um, so then I guess it was a DPW guy that quit, janitor type one. You know, so I guess he didn't, for some reason, quit after three days or something. So they have to get some new guy and see if he'll quit. Um, but they certainly don't pay those guys, you know, $75,000 a year. Um, it's a conversation about the Dunkin' Donuts, a lot of people hysterical, this Dunkin' Donuts is trying to move into town. And of course, I would agree, it's a bad idea to have a Dunkin' Donuts in Mendham. Um, and you know, but they can't be, um, you know, criminally unfair in saying that that business isn't legitimate and that some other business is legitimate. So this is a real legal fine line, they have to travel and trying to find some gimmick or loophole where they don't have to let a Dunkin' Donuts into town. And that's all that's gonna take place, is there's just gonna be an overt effort to stop it. Um, but um, you know, legally be, you know, okay, you know, so. Um, it should be interesting, um, to see how it all turns out. Um, so kind of, you know, funny circumstance. If it was a Starbucks, they'd probably say it's all okay. You know, but Dunkin' Donuts, ew, that's beneath us. Uh, you know, uh, anyway, um, so another thing, it was kind of just curious is the mayor brought up how somebody had contacted him, emailed him about an issue on Townsend Road or something and um, complaining about some of the roads stupid looking or ugly because it's not paved or some other, something like that. And the only thing I got out of it was the fact that the mayor brings up something like, and then it happened again later with one of the council members where somebody contacts them personally and uh, they leave that person anonymous. And, but if you go to the council meeting, they're gonna force you to say your name and your address. So if you wanna complain about your neighbor at a council meeting, it's right in his face and he gets to know who you are and, you know, you're outed. Um, you know, besides, I'd like to complain about, you know, my neighbor and their stupid pine trees that keep falling on the power line every single year and knocking our power out for a whole week. Um, you know, in the sense that something ought to be done, it's only been happening for 15 years, every year. You know, somebody ought to get a clue that those trees aren't really necessary. Um, but no one wants to pay to clean it up, I guess. I just say you just knock them down, it's not that much to clean up. It's, he doesn't, the property isn't developed. Who cares? You know, not a big deal. It's a day's work for a couple of good men. Uh, you know, what's the big deal? Uh, yeah, it's just stupid. It's insanely stupid. I mean, they had to put a new pole in this time, you know, very expensive, new pole. Uh, stupid. But you know, who wants to stand up at a council meeting and make a scene, you know? Um, so this here seems like a little bit of a hypocrisy. If I'm friends with the mayor, I get to complain about shit and I can be anonymous. And uh, if I'm not, then I have to be public and make a scene. So they ought to fix that. Um, no talking about residents' concerns unless you're willing to give the resident's name or just let people show up to a council meeting and say, yes, I live in Mendham, here's my ID. But you don't have to announce it to everybody where I live. You know, you don't have to make it personal. Um, anyway, even though, you know, they're gonna know your voice anyway, so, you know, but anyway. Uh, it's just something that comes up. Um, so they, something, does that say complaint? Pond, oh, pond is complete. So they've completed the borough pond. Oh, I should have had a picture. I have a picture of the winning fish, but I'm not gonna go looking for it on the computer now. Um, I mean, I guess I could maybe look for it a little bit, I'll just see if it's here, if it's convenient, then I'll do it. Oh, but I can't make it visible. Yeah, forget it. Too much trouble. You know, I'm just sorry, I have to miss out on that. Uh, I guess I should go to another Borough Holidays and see what that is. Very exciting. Um, uh, they have a whole bunch of them. Um, alright, so um, yeah, so I should do a, well, I could just do it in the next, I have to do the old meetings. I, you know, I did the most current one I have, I have a couple from the last couple of months. So I'll try to get to those and um, I can, you know, something like that. Um, alright, so they, yeah, they, uh, they did issue 121, uh, the police department citations for distracted driving, which is probably a good idea, you know, cell phone people. Um, but they, they're talking about getting a grant for it. There's always talk about grants and, you know, I understand that uh, this stuff exists and, but it's, it's just taking money from Peter to pay Paul. You're just, you're using up grant money that's usually the purpose of the state grants is because there's towns that can't afford to do stuff and they, you know, allow for the grant money so the towns can do stuff that they couldn't do because they couldn't afford it. This isn't exactly the poverty town, so it's kinda like, it's like, you know, having people in Mendham go into the, you know, food pantry or something, you know, it's just kind of, it's kinda slimy. But anyway, whatever, and they have some kids and cops thingy they're doing. You know, just warping the brains of the young ones. Uh, tree seedlings you can get for free, but don't plant trees. I mean, unless they're really, you know, bonsai, they don't grow very big because trees just fall down on things. A bad idea. Bushes, they should just, big bushes maybe, but no trees. Um, you know, make oxygen, but you don't have to worry about them falling on you. Um, contract by consent, contract by, I don't know what that is. Contact, oh, okay. Um, so yeah, somebody, some resident wanted to get rid of a tree and so he, you know, again, he doesn't have to announce himself at the meeting. He can just be a friend of one of the council members and say, hey, my neighbor's got a big giant tree. How about making a scene about it so I don't have to? You know, yeah, so it just doesn't seem exactly quite right. That's all I'm saying. Maybe there's nothing that can be done about that kind of personal graft, you know, of sorts. But uh, yeah, so um, Scott Farm came up in some vague way, uh, historical preservation, again, money about grants and whether this is the, the ecology or environmental commission kind of thing or whether this is historical. But see, they call sometimes environmental, the grants are sometimes historical, but historical can also be environmental kind of. Um, I think the idea is, is that, you know, to use the land in some kind of environmentally, um, what's the right word? I'm not thinking of it, but you know, adding value. So, you know, I had sort of had a conversation about that with a volunteer official person and you know, just being, maybe a good idea to do something to enhance uh, the life forms in the town by having a program to maybe, you know, raise some polywogs or something, simple stuff. Alright, um, steals, I don't know, I don't think I meant that. Something WTF, I don't think there's anything called WTF, but anyway, it doesn't matter. Um, I guess this is a report by Stanley, maybe that's it. Uh, there's something going on, I don't know what it is, the mayor is resigning or, I don't know what this, I saw signs up, Witsec for mayor. Um, and I don't know if that's a good choice, but I don't know if anybody, any of us, you know, they're all not very good choices, so. Um, they all seem way too rednecky involved and, you know, the whole, um, you know, this whole, uh, what is it, to recreate, you know, the, the pastime club, cops. You know, clubs and cops. Don't like clubs, don't like cops, yeah, so. Uh, don't like people who are, that have a vested interest in, you know, the thugs. Um, anyway, uh, the brown shirts, frankly. Uh, so there's something about this day camp, uh, you know, they do, some town provides some sort of babysitting service. Uh, anyway, um, something about some banner request for the food trucky thing. So the food truck thing hasn't gotten its liquor license yet, it hasn't gotten its banner request thing done, hasn't got this and that done. But anyway, they're all sure it'll all get done and finished because they're all excited about going to a, whatever a beer garden is. And um, it's gonna be just fun, 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 you know, to, to eat truck food and to, you know, listen to crappy, they have three bands. Well, that's, you know, just swell, three bands playing different music, cool. Um, so it's just gonna be loud and um, beer-y and probably no smoking though. Uh, you know, if you can't smoke with, I, I just have a smoking garden and uh, you know, that would be really nice. Like that old traditional smoking grove garden, uh, you know, where, you know, you could smoke like a free American again. Uh, that would be charming as fuck. Oh, I said fuck. Anyway, um, uh, so the rain date is the next day. I know you gotta pay, I think, five bucks or something if you're an adult to get in and then you gotta pay for everything you buy and, you know, so. Never fun if you have to pay for it. That's how I look at it. Uh, so anyway, so and they have a little anecdotal stories about all the bank employees are gonna be flying over there to have fun, fun, fun. But anyway, whatever, it's just not my thing. Uh, it's not the kind of thing, I think the town should be doing stuff that's constructive, science fairs or something. Do something that educates people, makes them better, you know, something, you know. But yeah, they shouldn't be subsidizing fun anyway, not their job. Um, so the mayor had nothing, items, okay, so some regular citizen did stand up, Mr. Weisman. Sorry, yeah, shouldn't out him. Uh, talking about, um, apparently this electricity program that somehow all these towns are doing now where they're buying electricity, well, they're not really buying it, they're just, they're just doing a one provider contract thing. And apparently, um, maybe there is some real savings to be generated through, you know, those larger purchases, so to speak. Uh, but he pointed out that there's also renewable choices, so, um, but again, renewable is kind of a fake word because all the renewable stuff has been subsidized and so it's already been paid for by tax dollars in some sense or another, so that's all kind of cheating. Uh, but anyway, and then he brought up some kind of problem with the, some brook near where he is that um, when the big rains come, the water, too much water, it erodes the soil and it's going in, sediment's going into the stream and that's probably not a good thing. So something to, somebody maybe should fix someday. Um, but anyway, you know, that stuff happens all over the place. That's part of the problem is the, that's why the stream isn't too healthy, it's because there's too much. It's because there's too much sediment in it, but anyway, um, smart something or other. Uh, no, yeah, I'm pretty sure it was, pretty sure, oh, smart growth. Okay, so then they start talking about business and the Dunkin' Donuts thing in veiled language, you know, not talking about it directly. But talking about indirectly, and so apparently they're gonna try to use some smart growth for strategy to. To prevent the wrong kind of growth, um, it's kinda funny, um, so, yeah, again, this is, it's kind of a funny irony. That they're starting to get all aggressive about helping businesses in the town, which really I don't think is their job. And, uh, at the same time as a business is trying to get into the town that they don't want, you know, so it is kind of, uh. Ironic, that's all I'll say. Um, so, uh, yes, they did some Dunkin' Donuts talk, but they're kinda the town attorney guy, just kind of. Well, you can't really say that, be a little careful what you're saying there, don't say, oh, we can't overtly try to kibosh this or then we could get sued. Um, you know, so it's kinda funny, um. Um, so, don't encourage outside something or other. Yeah, but you just don't want people coming into town to go to Dunkin' Donuts, you don't want people from other towns coming into this town to get donuts. That's just really bad, bad for Mendham, bad, not a good thing. All right, so I think that's probably, uh, enough of a mess, so, uh, I will. No doubt get back into the hang of this thing and become more professional in what I'm doing and, um, blah, blah, blah. And so forth and whatnot, but yes, I need a better routine and, you know, the talent's gotta be a little better at producing this stuff and. And what's gotta be a lot better, yeah, a lot better than the last two months. Oh, and then there's website issues, of course, so inmendum.com should work, but, uh, GoDaddy, kind of a crappy provider. Um, you know, just can't seem to do the forwarding right on this one domain, I don't know if it's just this one for some reason. My other ones work okay, but this one, nah, not so good, so it's ruined all the search engine references because they didn't do the forwarding. Uh, doesn't work half the time and, uh, so no one's probably watching these videos anyway, yeah. Uh, but, you know, one way or the other, I'll try to monitor it and fix the problem if possible. And, you know, switch domain registration with some other company or something, whatever I have to do to get this better. But technically, inmendum.com should work, um, and it should be updated and whatnot. And, uh, these videos should be accessible, uh, through the website and other information and such. So, uh, yeah, that seems like enough, yeah, I just go to the, uh, they have the meeting schedules and agendas and stuff. But they, and they post some of the documents, so some of them are there, they do make it, but they're not very current. And so the most recent Borough Council meeting, uh, happened the seventeenth, and I'm doing the third. So I don't have the seventeenth meeting and, uh, you know, it's the twenty-eighth. And the minutes from this meeting aren't available yet, they're not where they're supposed to be, so, you know, it's that kinda thing, it's, uh. Yeah, it's not terribly efficient and, uh. Yeah, you have to go to one page to get the agenda and then you go to the other page to get the, the minutes, it's, you know, not very. So it says, recent meetings and minutes, but the minutes aren't here. They're on the council page has the min- minutes, well, they're not there either though, by the way, so it doesn't really matter. Yeah, yeah, it's not there either, see, let's see, Borough Council, see, they have the, see, you have to go to the council page. And then you scroll down and they have stuff. So, the last minutes they have published are from April nineteenth, so yes, this April, this May third meeting. And it's now May twenty-eighth, isn't posted, you know, this kinda stuff. Uh, I mean, the minutes are, a month later really aren't worth much, uh, you know, to, to a news organization. Anyway, um, so yeah, so enough of a video and, uh, you know. More professionalism coming, it's just gonna be really, eventually be a really good, you know, really valuable resource. Eventually, but not right yet, okay, anyway, till next time. Which will probably be going backward in time, is, uh, have to do the old meetings, well, something like that, who knows? Maybe I'll watch, maybe I'll listen to all of them and then just do all of them as a group, yeah, I guess, you know. It's a little tedious, um, hardly tedious. Now, I think one of the other ones has the presentation by the schools for all the money they're gonna spend on all kinds of wacky crap.